Now, you ready? I'd like to call the Berlin School Committee meeting to order. So, we have a... First of all, I'd like to welcome our superintendent, Mr. Zanghi. Do you prefer Jeff or Jeffrey?
Jeff.
Jeff, okay. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for Berlin?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda for Berlin.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Is there any further information? Can we do some of the business items in the Berlin School Committee?
Yes, let's do that.
So, we're going to go with the business items for the Berlin School Committee. Trying to be productive here.
And our first order of business is to appoint Superintendent Zanghi as representative to the Assabett Valley Collaborative Board of Directors.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor of appointing?
Aye.
Aye, okay. The next is to appoint Kristi Turgen, way over there, as a member of Central Office to be copied on all emails. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second that. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Kristi, are you over at Central Office now? Full-time over there?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome, thank you. Nice to have you. Next is the annual report to the town. Did you have a chance to read it? Do you have any corrections or comments?
I did it. I did read it.
And part of it was you.
And it was very well-written.
And full disclosure, I used some of Cliff's work from last year and Tom's from the year before. So, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual report to the town.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Really think that's all we can do right now?
That is all we can do right now.
Oh, Bob has something to add, yes.
Quick question or many clarification. Kristi, just so Kristi is not overwhelmed with a million emails. That's CC now emails to the school committee, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. And it's probably more important that the school committee members remember that because we're more likely to be the ones to forget that, to include Kristi on all our communication because she is the keeper of the record.
And I'll probably email Cheryl for about six months.
Oh, my goodness. This is a bit awkward. Well, welcome, Jeff. I want to assure you, Jeff, we're not always this slow to get off the ground in our meetings. So, I don't think this is a pattern. But we knew of two people who wouldn't be able to be here and was saying he'd be late, so it seemed appropriate we could move forward.
Do you want to talk about regionalization out of formal session?
It's information, so we're not going to be asked to be voting on anything, are we?
No.
Then I think that's an excellent idea.
Thank you. I actually, with a lot of help from my friends, have prepared an update. This is considered a draft at this point. This was in the Dropbox, so... Do you have it too?
Any changes from the drive? I have the drive. What was in the drive? Oh.
Need the copies? This is a draft because we're starting a process this week of meeting with... The first meeting is with the Berlin FinCom. And we'll be meeting with Berlin Select Boards in two weeks, and then Boylston in subsequent weeks. So, we thought we wanted to begin to put together materials that would hopefully be a little bit easier to digest, sort of be a summary of the work that the committee has done, and also share some thoughts as of now of what our resolutions are. Ken, you're not going to prep this now, right?
I'm becoming...
We can talk. It's public. It's a public meeting. To begin with, we just outlined what our purpose was for the subcommittee. The subcommittees actually had a total of seven meetings since June. Our schedule is to meet with the Select Boards in FinCom in January and February to place this item on town warrants in February, March. To... We've already shared two newsletters with the community thus far, September, November, and we plan to schedule one for this month, March and April. We held a public forum in June. We actually held two. One in here in Toledo and one in Berlin. And the town vote would take place at town meetings in May. If this were to pass, there would be what's called the Transitional School Committee until November of 2020. That sounds so far away, doesn't it? The financial structure of the full regionalized district would begin on July 1, 2019. There's a group of 22 people who have worked very hard on this and have really participated in a very important and vigorous way. They're noted on the backside of this report. One of the things we asked the group to do was to bring us questions, issues, concerns, so that we could begin to understand what are the reasons we might want to proceed with something like this, and what are the reasons we might not want to? What are the concerns that the communities, the teachers and other stakeholders would have? The questions and concerns kind of fell into some broad categories. The first and foremost thing that several people reminded us to start with this issue because it's clearly the most important, and that is, what's the educational impact? What's the educational benefit for students of full regionalization? We heard some great presentations from folks in this room. We saw data. We also heard from them in terms of benefits they could see of being fully regionalized. Probably the most important being a fully integrated curriculum. Also, the fact that you could more easily share staffing and resources across the system, as well as having more time available to address student learning as opposed to doing duplicate reports and other things that are currently necessary. The teachers have been a part of the committee, and we also had committee members who've deliberately gone out and tried to provide information for teachers. I think during the interview process, I think both of our candidates for superintendent came back and said, "Oh, the teachers have some concerns." So, we really made a concerted effort after that to ask what the questions and concerns were and to try to start to put out at least whatever information we can. We can't answer all their questions at this point because some of them are questions they will determine in conjunction with their unions. And the teachers will ultimately decide which union will represent them. One thing that's been really important to share is no teacher will go backwards salary-wise. They cannot by state law. Current contracts will remain in effect from July to June. And I think that's actually, should be July of 2019 to June of 2000. Is that right?
Well, I thought if the vote was in May, the transition year begins in July 1.
Okay. So, and the current contracts would remain in place?
Remain in effect for years. So, you have that typical, that year to renegotiate a new contract? Just seems different because the school committee elections don't line up with that because they're every other year now would be... Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so that is correct. Thank you.
I believe so.
Salaries will be ultimately aligned on one salary scale, but that does not have to occur all in one year. It can actually be phased in, although Bob has prepared some financial models that do in fact do it in one year. And it's not... I mean, it is possible that's the option that we'll be able to afford to go with, but that's not yet been determined. Berlin teachers who are employed as of the start of the expanded district, which I believe would be the official start of July 1, 2019, would be subject to or have available retiring health benefits, which Berlin teachers do not currently have. Boylston teachers will end up with a reduced health insurance cost because of some differences in percentages on health insurance. There may also be some salary adjustments, but those are individual and not yet in fairs.
Right, the healthcare, the piece for the employees is the rates that will be lowered. The percentage that we... The region A is a little bit higher, so the... But from an employee perspective, the base are less than our plan versus the town's plan.
For Boylston?
For the teachers.
Thank you, that's all. One of the biggest issues and certainly the theme of a lot of our meetings was discussion about local control. If there's any barrier to this being something people feel comfortable doing, it's the fear of losing local control. And so, there were two essential parts to that. One is, people are worried that a school could disappear from their community. And we've, you know, in working with our legal counsel, have seen a number of communities where there's specific language in the amendment in the regional agreement that makes it clear that a school cannot go away, that there will be a school in each community. Obviously, if something changes, the community can vote to do something different, as they can now. But they will maintain that control as far as having an elementary school in their community. We also know from a pragmatic point of view, it will make no sense to bus kids, the distances that would be required if we were to have one school in one of the communities. The second issue was a really big one. A few years ago, we had a feasibility study. The feasibility study showed that financially, there was a huge impact to the positive on one community and to the negative on the other of regionalization. And we wrestled with that for quite a while. We had the great fortune to have Russ, our attorney, come forward. And actually, it's an idea that started with Angela. She had brought some thoughts to the group a long time ago about the fact that she was hearing about alternative assessment methods or alternative allocation methods. And Russ brought to us a method that he used with a school in Western Mass that was approved by DESA. And that method actually provides for local control for each community of their elementary, for their elementary school. It keeps the allocation method for the high school the way it is already, but it gives each community the opportunity to control their own spending relative to their elementary school, which is just incredible, really, to have this an ideal option, I think, for addressing some of the concerns. The outcome financially is similar to what it would be without regionalization. So, the bottom line is, there's no huge cost savings to us regionalizing. Bottom, bottom line, right? However, there's no cost impact that is adverse either. It's really kind of a wash, would you...
It's very insignificant. And I have a one-page summary of this that I'm preparing, but it's very insignificant. The elementary school in Boylston is decreasing, it's increasing about 3,000. Berlin Memorial is decreasing costs by about 30,000, give or take 1,000. And the regional district is budget would be increasing 48, but that's basically because we're counting rural schools, right? We're saying that's going to go away if all the schools in the district have to be rural schools or to get rural schools funded. And Boylston Elementary is not, so you're raising that, I think. However, we're considering that difference, but it's possible that funding could go away over time anyways. So, we're being conservative and saying it's an increase. It might be something that's potentially going to go away over time anyways.
Another important topic was governance. There are slight population differences between the two communities. And in some regions of the state, people have used formulas to figure out how many school committee members each community would have. The subcommittee felt very, very strongly. We explored a whole bunch of, I think there's five or six options that are allowed by law. We explored a lot of them and really concluded that we felt it was very important to maintain our current approach, which is three and three. And that it's also sending an appropriate message regarding collaboration. That's the nature of the relationship that we want. We want to approach this as both communities are equal partners in the schools. The last topic is certainly the efficiencies that could be achieved through full regionalization. The fact that particularly for somebody like Carol, who's filing reports and grants and doing it three times, or filing three different documents, one for each district, having redundant financial systems, which is something Bob has talked about, and even from the perspective of staff and school committee negotiating three different teacher contracts every two or three years. So, that is the overview. I'm interested in questions, comments, thoughts? It's for you.
I think that the one-page piece is really important. And your elaboration plays off that. So, as a presentation, I think that's a good strategy. I want to compliment you. And I'm really glad to see that all of the subcommittee members are named. That's really important. Because it should be evidence that it's been broadly consulted and there are multiple constituencies. I suppose someone could say you've left out a constituency, but that, you know... But the evidence is here that a good effort has been put out to have multiple constituencies. I really like the way you've... The committee has thought about what might the questions be, anticipating those, and trying to come up with solutions and address them. So, overall, lots of kudos to the work of the committee. I'm impressed with your work since you started. I'm not disappointed at all. You're doing a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I know. My appreciation is, you know, has a little priority, but I think it's important to give it.
That's true.
I think it's important to give it where it's deserved. I know personally...
Could I add my kudos to Lori? Because being on the committee and knowing how much luck we kind of sifted through to get such a lovely, concise answering all big questions, this is really a lot of work that you put into this, and I really appreciate it. I think you did a really nice job on this.
Thank you. Angela, it's been a huge help. She and I were going over some things last night, and somehow I had left out the issue of schools in each community. It's like, oh, my God. All issues that people care about. That's probably like number one. It wasn't on there, so it's been a collaborative effort.
I would say one thing. And I think I shared this with you after our last meeting, when we were walking out after the meeting. I had been in attendance at a meeting of a group that's looking at governance in Berlin. And I had been at a forum. And one message that this group that's studying it heard from people who were there was, it's helpful and important to have a crisp statement of need. Why? What's the problem we're trying to solve? What are the needs? And while this is terrific and I love it, I'm not sure that the crisp statement of need is there. So, I would... I thought that was good advice to the committee that got it in Berlin, and I think it would be good advice for this committee as well. Nothing long, nothing, you know, too complex, but simple, crisp. Puts it right out there.
I think we could maybe do some work around the purpose at the beginning. You know, that sort of adds a little bit more about the why.
Yep.
That's good to hear.
The first one and number three really just came up in prior discussions.
Right.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
I just couldn't hear Bob over here. I'm sorry.
The first bullet point and number three is what came up in other meetings that people thought was very important to be highlighted, to be a clear point. So, I think it's there and it's part of a larger document. It doesn't necessarily jump out when you put that as... Maybe highlight that and cover something, I don't know.
Or even integrate that as part of the statement of need and purpose, so that it's really upfront, that that's our primary concern. And then take it right out of the key questions and resolution. That might make sense.
This is great.
Now, the second piece of this is Bob's going to prepare a one-pager to give more detail around the financial. What are the factors that have been thought about? What goes into it and what the actual... Based on the use 2018...
The 2018 budget, yeah.
And then just applied it to this other method and as an example to show people what it might look like.
Yeah, that obviously sounds very important.
Yeah, I have half page right now.
Half-page your time, dude. Don't feel you have to fill the whole page.
You got less than one hundred and fifty-five minutes, I presume.
So, any more questions or observations? Okay. Ed, it's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, now that Ed's here, we have a quorum for the regional committee. So, I am going to call the Berlin Voice and Regional Union 60 School Committee to order. We need to take care of the first order of business, which is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for the regional district?
So...
Did you get that, Kristi? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't believe we have any communications. I'm not aware of any. Do we have any petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. I know that on the agenda, it says that we are going to have a report from our Tohantos student member, but my understanding is that that will not be available this evening because there hasn't been a whole lot going on since our last meeting that's new and fresh and exciting. Move on to Jessica, CPAC. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Jessica, I'm from the Berlin, the president for CPAC. So, we've been busy since last time we had a report. We had our National Leadership Schools Week in December, and this year's theme was Stand Up, Sit Tall for Inclusion. Dee Gardner's class here at Tohanto, she had her ELA class. Some good projects that were displayed here. I believe we're in Central Office. And we did a fantastic job, like always. And the ES, there's been a class in the courses. And then there were three other students who were in the seminaries. So, we're looking at the Central Office. We're really thrilled, excuse me, that the kids participated. And I believe there's some certificates going out to all the kids who took part.
Jessica, can I ask a favor? Can you speak up a little bit more? I'm old in my, sorry. But you still work well.
Our next meeting is January 24th, and Karen's going to be doing the rights and responsibilities presentation that we have to do every year. But it's a nice opportunity for parents to learn about what the process is for 504s and IEPs. And we already have some parents who are going to Skype in, which is nice. We have that available now to everybody. They just need to get in touch with us a little bit before the meeting so we can get them all set up. But that way, people can attend if they can't leave their house. They can still attend the meeting.
Nice.
And our pie sale was a success. Thank you to everybody who bought pies. And it's letting us continue our scholarship, which we're open this year now for applicants. So, we're hoping that kids will take advantage of that. To any senior who had at least a year's worth of services in any of the district schools and who's graduating from either Tohanto or Asa. But last year's recipient was an Asa student, I think, for the first time. So, we're thrilled that we'll be able to do that. And then the last things are that we're going to be doing Excellent Educator Awards again this year, and we're looking forward to some fun spring meetings. And you guys are always welcome. Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you, Jessica. Does anyone have any questions for Jessica? Thank you very much, Ed. All right. Our next report is from our superintendent. That will be you, yes.
Well, I was hoping to have a draft of my entry plan, but I had a couple unintended quiet days last week to kind of work on it on Thursday and Friday. So, I finished it. So, I was hoping today that we could, you know, vote on whether we would approve or not, or at least so I could get started on it, which I guess I have already. So, I just wanted to go through it quickly, you know, just to give you a quick outline of what my thoughts were. I was told that everybody has it on there, that everybody would like... How many do you have?
Yeah, let me ask, does everyone have access to it?
My battery died. Do you have a draft?
I will leave you my print copy. And I will look on the drive. Since I may be alive.
Open picture.
And we'll just get to it. You know how that is in the drive.
So, you know, because of the time of the year I've started, my overarching goal for my entry plan was to get to know the district, get a, you know, a comprehensive snapshot of the district, and also the district to get to know me. And I mean comprehensive, not just the teachers and administrators, but also, you know, the larger community, learning community. So, the first page is just sort of an introduction page. Talking about how happy I am to be here. Second page has some goals on it, some just sort of small goals. The first one, identify focus areas in the district to facilitate the development of a district improvement plan. I'll save that one for later. Second one, maximize overall efficiency by using a program. That's really everything, you know, not just, you know, meeting programming, the academic, everything that we do. Build trust, collaborate, communication, positive working relationships with all stakeholders. That's probably one of the big ones, just having the community get to know me, being able to trust me. So, that's a big one. Establish presence in the community and develop and understand the culture and values. So, again, it's just sort of a small version of what I said before, develop a snapshot. Really only three steps to collect evidence, which I will be doing with the help of through interviews and... Did I drop something else?
It's Cliff's name.
It's just his sign.
Now, my sign fell over. I'm no longer identified.
So, collect evidence, and I'll talk a little bit about that. Analyze evidence. That'll be something that'll be done myself and with a lot of help from the leadership team. And then the share... And then the sharing, obviously, is, you know, will be the public sharing of the information with the committee and the public. So, on the second page is just a small timeline of the work. The collection of evidence is through individual interviews, there's some focus groups, and document and data review. I have a list of that that I'll go over, and I plan on doing that between January and April. The second step would be to analyze the data, and that process I anticipate taking about a month of meetings with the leadership team. And so that would be May, and then just a final presentation in June to the school On page four, you see the collection of evidence, interviews, who I plan on interviewing, and then there'll be some changes in there. One of the things I didn't know, that there wasn't a town manager in Berlin, so there'll be some changes in there, and certainly some additions as you go through this, if there are people you think that I should interview, that are not on this list, people I missed, I hope just, you know, I can add them on. Focus groups, you see that list of focus groups. And really by that I mean just interviewing a larger group of people, you know, I know when I came for my interview, I got to, actually they were interviewing me, I think, but, you know, a group of faculty members, a group of students, so I'm hoping we'll have a little bit different kind of conversation this time, but I was amazed at all the information I got from those groups when I was here. And then extensive document and data review, you can see the list of them there. I don't know if any of you have any have questions about any of those. Basically, any of the stuff, any of the budget documents, any of the curriculum guides, any of the stuff that's developed, just at the school level, but it's not at the district level. And finally, school visits, it's one of the things I plan on doing a lot of, not just for this, but just in general, it's, I said in the interview, is probably the most fun part of the job. And certainly, you know, one of the things I've noticed, just in the, in the whole three days I've been here, is, you know, having that central office where it is, certainly makes you feel just a little bit disconnected from the district, so I think it makes it even more wanting to get into the schools. The final page is some sample questions that I came up with and got from various places also. So I just consulted with some other people, some other superintendents that, who, you know, said, well, you might want to, you might want to ask this question or that question, just stuff I wouldn't have thought of. I do have some questions in there about regionalization. I know you guys have done a lot of work on it, but I'd like to get a sort of picture of myself also. And if there are any questions as you go through that, that you think I might want to answer, or that maybe I might want to ask, or that maybe I shouldn't ask, please tell me, if you can prevent me from stepping on a landmine, I would appreciate it. But I think most of them are pretty benign. So the overarching goal of this, once I collect the data, you know, I have to have a final product, so the question is, once you collect all of this, once you get a snapshot of the community, once you get a feel for the district, once you, you know, start building the relationships, well, what do you do with all of this? And so my goal is, I think, just in the time I've been here and the work I've done before I started, the current leadership team, under the, under the leadership of the past superintendent, did a great, great job of putting together lots of action plans, things like that, so there's a lot of things in place, there's a great base. But I think the next step is the development of a cohesive five-year district improvement plan. So this work that we do, and that's why I want to get so many, so much input, and especially on the analysis, because I may look at something, you know, as someone who's only been here for, you know, a month, maybe a lot different in the analysis phase of this than somebody who's been here as long as Diane, for example, or anybody else, everybody who's been here a little longer than me, but it's important in that analysis phase to make sure the interpretation, we get as many interpretations of that data as possible. So the result would be, after the results are presented, that we would begin the process over the summer of developing a five-year district improvement plan. That would be the summer work that I will plan on leading, and so, and the reason for that is that in the fall, my goals will be based on this district improvement plan, a five-year plan. The principal's goals will be based on my goals, which are based on the district improvement plan, and it would follow from there. So all of these goals should align, mine should definitely be, if not aligned with this district improvement plan, then we did something incorrectly. So anybody, anybody off the street should be able to pick this district improvement plan up and say, I have an understanding of what they're doing. It should not be a mystery to anybody. We're well aware all the time that we serve the public, and that they need to understand the stuff, and so everything we do here should be public and transparent, and so that's what I plan. So that's a plan for the, that's my plan for the entry plan, and then the follow-up right up to the setting of goals in the fall. So I don't know if there's any questions. I know I talked a little bit about this with some of the leadership team, and I will in our next leadership meeting, this is what we are going to concentrate on, on the entry plan, collecting this data, and actually you helping me figure out how I'm going to collect all this data. Are there any questions? I know I wasn't planning on getting this done so early, but I really do need to get the process started, there's a lot of data to collect and a lot of interviews.
I'll start with an observation. I appreciate your presentation. I didn't have time to review it before this meeting, so I'm going to hear it for the first time. I would, procedurally, from the school committee perspective, I'm thinking that since we just received it on the data drive today, and there are two members who are not here, that perhaps it should be revisited, perhaps briefly at the next meeting, and in the meantime, committee members would be required to, if they have questions come up, they should call you or talk to you. Is it your impression, Jeff, this is a little out of my depth here, that this requires a formal approval by the school committee?
I don't think it does.
I don't think it does either?
No. I just, I don't want to go down a road that's, we think of all, you know, we've been here and you have, so you're going down a completely wrong road. So I mean, I would look for input from the leadership team also to, you know, just based on this discussion, which was initially what it was going to be.
Right. So members?
I think it looks great. I love your cover letter with the listen, learn, read, I think that's simple and appropriate, and I'm excited that you're interested in doing a five-year district improvement plan. I think we really need that, and I think as a school committee, it's time for us to kind of look at the district goals, so with you gathering the data and discussing with the team in May, and coming together with your district, your goals, I mean, that helps us, you know, helps us revisit what, you're doing the work for us, of what the district needs right now at this point in time and to the future. So I think it's great.
Thank you. I also want to say that I know you're going through this, we're going through this regionalization process. When I put this together and I started thinking about what I wanted to do, I took that into consideration, and it doesn't matter, you know, this is still what I would do, so it would work either way, I can believe.
I think you're right. I think you're absolutely right. And another piece of this, I think you're absolutely doing the right thing, that's the first thing, but the second thing is, it dovetails with our plans on doing governance work, because there's going to be a nexus point where the district plan, school committee goals, superintendent goals are all going to come together, and so I think that that's a good thing. I think that's really good. The timing is good for us as a committee, even though it started in the middle of your term. We get that.
I've had a lot of help already, so it's made it a lot easier.
Laurie and Ed, do you have anything you want to say?
The only thing is just, I'm happy to see you asking questions about people's perceptions relative to regionalization, just share with us. You know, people are raising questions or concerns that's really data for us to consider and act on, or be super creative and strategic.
Well, you'll get an honest interpretation of what it says. I mean, not only will you get the analysis, you'll get the raw data, you'll get what they say to me. It's really, you know, it's the analysis of it that the leadership team does, that will go into the five-year district improvement plan, and in turn, all of our goals, all the leadership team's goals, but the raw data is something that, you know, certainly will be, you know, it'll be yours. What you do with it after that is certainly is up to you with Dr. Hooch, fully disclosed.
I'm excited about, I'm starting from the eyes of the district and what our needs are, and I think it's a really good time for that, and we'll be really interested to see what you learn.
Yeah, I'm excited about doing it too.
Is there any further questions? Okay.
Oh, I just, I, one more thing. One more thing. When we're talking about town officials, I think it's awesome that you're going to do senior center leaders. I also, in Berlin, we have a town treasurer, that I think is what we meant maybe to do a spot and introduce yourself. And when you go over to the municipal building, you can just walk through, and there's really just a few people that are there, but he's one of them, the town clerk, just, it's a small town, he'd be happy to meet you all.
Good, thank you for that.
Okay, Bob.
So my report is on the drive, I'll have that, and what I'm reporting on this, at this time, is the, is a budget update for FY 2018 through, at the mid-year point, we did last year at this time as well. And I provided detailed reports for each district, but also a summary spreadsheet that rolls things up to a little bit more higher and digestible level, which is what I'm prepared to go over, but I can answer more questions if you have them. So the top district is Boylston, and really, we've kept fairly close to what our original budget was. There's some small budget adjustments, relatively minor this year, at this point. And at this point in the year, we have 7.5% of the budget remaining, which is significantly more than at this time last year. As I've noted in my report, anticipate that any surplus that we would have at the end of the year, actually, I should step back, for all three districts, the budget balance, that's not, doesn't really represent kind of available funds. There are things that we're going to be spending the second half of the year that are not encumbered. We've encumbered things that we know we're going to be paying, like salaries, contracts that we have, estimated electricity and oil usage, things like that. We haven't encumbered things such as substitute teacher costs, which we basically pay as the need arises. Some professional development costs is for tuition. Technology purchases, we tend to hold off on a little bit late in the year to make sure that we have adequate funding, and custodial supplies, you know, as we consume them in order new, we're not recording them. And then there's things that can arise as well, so I just wanted to clarify what the budget balance represented, and not that it was kind of all available. However, we do anticipate having some, based on where we are, some funding available at the end of the year. Boylston, assuming kind of nothing arises, we would need to set any surpluses or any of your balances that we have available, need to set that aside, and basically preserve and build up our school choice balances. We're using them at a level that's not sustainable, and so to the extent that we can kind of shore that up and maintain a healthy level, that'll help us as we move into the FY 19 and FY 20 budgets. So that's all I have to mention on Boylston. And I'll move on to Berlin. In Berlin, there are some budget adjustments that I will comment on. You might recall that we had some changes approved over the summer, approving, related to staffing primarily. So we had an early childhood specialist position added for part of the year, that's a significant piece of what's driving the instructional budget adjustment up. We also added a paraprofessional that is offset by a reduction in out-of-district tuitions. We anticipated there'd be an out-of-district placement cost that we're able to service in-house instead, so they net to zero. So that's what's driving the instruction increase, those two pieces. And then the large decrease in tuitions, we were, it's really comprised of three things. One is an out-of-district placement that we're able to service in-house. Two is that we received more circuit breaker funding than we anticipated. And three is that we're able to prepay some, excuse me, prepay some out-of-district tuitions. You're permitted to prepay up to three months of the following year in the fiscal year you're closing, so at the end of FY 17, we prepaid some FY 18 expenses. So that's the reason the tuition budget adjustment was made, which really paid for the early childhood specialist position. There's 5.6% of the budget remaining in Berlin, 162,000, which is a fair amount less than last year, and that's primarily due to the early childhood position that was needed to be covered from other areas. So they're, I mean, they're not in a precarious position by any stretch of the imagination, but a little bit less than was available at this time last year. In the region, there are some budget adjustments as well. The administration includes, costs are up, that includes a legal settlement for a former employee. Instruction costs are up 28,000. The addition of a half-time social worker that was added, was discussed during the summer and was added with the school committee approval, and that's what's driving the instruction cost up. The, on the flip side, the fixed charges actually helped fund that. Fixed charges represents two things, insurance costs roll into this line, and property and casualty and general liability, we changed our, we went up to a competitive quote process, and we changed our insurance carrier to Maya, which is a group purchasing collaborative that purchases insurance for regional school districts and municipalities. The savings there was approximately 20,000 on our policies, and then we, through the negotiations of the Tohanto teachers' contract, as part of that, we made a slight change in the co-payments that resulted in about a $10,000 decrease in healthcare costs. So that's the $32,000 decrease in a budget adjustment, which is actually a cost savings. And then the out-of-district tuition reduction of 10,000 was because we're able to prepay for a tuition, and we're able to shift that money to cover other budget needs. So that's the budget adjustments. The overall region budget shows 486,000, 468,000 available, or 5.6% of the budget. The, the overall region budget shows 486,000, 468,000 available, or 5.6% of the budget. Examples of a couple of things that are significant that are not encumbered here are school choice and charter school charges. Those are very significant. They come through as kind of offsets to the revenue we get from the state, so it's not easy, easy to encumber them and apply them. So, so again, that's another factor that makes it look like we have a little bit more available than we do. I'd say about 200,000. So, but I think.
Can I back you up?
Sure.
So you're saying of the 468,606, there's really only 200,000 there?
No, about, about 200 will be charged to us for school choice and charter. It's not deducted from that.
Okay.
That's based on the preliminary data. It could change, but it shouldn't change that much.
Okay.
So I don't, I think we're in a decent position this year for all three districts. You know, the, the overall challenge is, is just to the extent to which we've been leveraging school choice in Boylston and in the region. I don't think we've been leveraging school choice. I think we've been leveraging school choice more conservatively in Berlin and we're in a very decent place with the healthy reserves there. The reserves are healthy in the region for school choice and, but we're using a fair amount. So I think that the challenge will be how do we kind of ratchet that back and at the same time support our school budgets and needs. You know, but I think in FY 18.
Does anyone have any questions? So, Tom? I remember saying this last year, I really appreciated the, the snapshot because the line-by-line items sheets can be a little blurry. Only loved by someone who takes them. My guess is.
I don't love them either. Because I have to.
Well, thank you. Okay, I guess that brings us to our Berlin Memorial School Principal, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening. I'll be brief, you've got my report, so I won't belabor it. I did, however, want to invite everybody to join us on Thursday, January 25th at 7:00 here in Tohonto for the annual winter concert between the, hosted by both Mr. Thompson and his young charges at BEF and our fine music teacher in, in Berlin. It starts at 7:00, it lasts about an hour, it's a wonderful time. Hope you can all come.
Thank you. Wow, that was pleasing.
I am pleased.
Mr. Thompson, you're next.
All right, I will. Good evening, and I don't think I can be that. You know, I think we've been asked to highlight one thing, and one thing in particular, I think it's at the meeting, Laurie, I think asked, what is the impact of the tight budget at Boylston Elementary School? What does that look like for kids and for teachers? So I wanted to be kind of thoughtful about that and I highlighted five real specific areas that the, the tight budget is impacting us. Briefly, special ed support is really tight, so it doesn't allow for a lot of, you know, best practices opportunities. It's all within legal limits and we're giving kids what they need, but they're not necessarily, the teachers and the paraprofessionals aren't getting the consult time that they typically would. You know, for anybody that's, you know, worked in special ed or had a student in special ed, you know that that collaboration time is, is really key to, to show growth. Additionally, we had to adjust some academic schedules, not necessarily for best practices, but to make sure that we were meeting those IDP needs. I looked at the large class size in fourth grade, which we keep an eye on, 24 and 25. We really didn't have any other opportunities because of the, the budget restriction and because we made the, the choice to, to look into second grade where the numbers were equally large, but the students were younger and far less able to work independently. We also, we see a reduction in access to the library. The library is only open four days a week where traditionally it's been five days a week. And that, that room hums, there, there's kids coming in and out and not just for specials, but for maker space and for all the different activities that Mrs. Sullivan does. And the library is quiet on Wednesdays. And in the last piece, Paul's not here to talk too much about it, but we did have technology plans that we were going to be moving forward with the one-to-one initiative. We were looking at iPads in some of the lower grades. We did defer any of that because of the, where we're at with the budget. So tried to be brief and cover all those things, but you know, it's, it's working, but it's not as well as it would like or could be.
This is perfect. I mean, it's bad, but it's perfect. It's exactly the kind of stuff that I would think, as Bob, as you and others are reading with income and the Boylston selection, that these are the kinds of examples we need to share to demonstrate this is the impact. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to put a feedback on Aces' report on the impacts, the compiling budget constraints and the impacts it has on our students here at Tohonto. The three main areas that I focused on, the first most curriculum, last school committee meeting, Carol had gone over our five-year curriculum plan. Because of the limited budget and the constraints, we do have to prioritize. And because so many of our curriculums are, or resources are over 10 years old, it's going to take us some time to get those resources up to where they, where they should be. But again, all of that impacts, has potential impacts on, you know, our students' access to current research and which eventually will impact, potentially impact student achievement. As far as technology is concerned, we're very lucky in the middle school in grades six and seven. And hopefully by the end of this year, we will have eighth grade as well, and the core academic classes will have tronk of cards. However, in 2019, our high school students will be required to take online their state required MCAS test in 10th grade online. And currently, we have one promo card in the library that is, can be signed out for our high school students. So we are going to be incapable as far as that one-to-one technology. We don't want those students to, to go through our middle school experience, having, you know, the, the sort of one-to-one in their core academic classes and then get to the high school, lose those, some of those skills or potential skills, and then be required their sophomore year to take, you know, that exam that they need to pass for them to graduate their 10th grade year. So that definitely is going to be, you know, a top priority and budget constraints are going to impact that as well. And then lastly, we cannot overlook it because it is, you know, just compiling is a social emotional impact we are seeing with our, with our students. And it's, this is everywhere, no matter what district you go to, private school, public school, the increasing number of students who have mental health issues. And, you know, currently, we have over 600 students and we have two school counselors. And the ratio should be 1 to 250. One school counselor per 250 students. We were lucky enough to get 0.5 school adjustment counselor. But again, budget-wise, we're trying to make up for that because it was not budgeted for this year's budget. We originally had put it in as a, as a full-time 1.0 FTE, but because of budget constraints, it's down to 0.8 for FY 19, which is better than 0.5. But again, it's sort of, it's like the, the snowball effect. It does impact, you know, we don't have the ability to say, okay, I'm on Wednesday and you have, you know, a crisis. So, you know, all of those things do compile and make things just, you know, a little bit more, more difficult for faculty and staff to really support our students.
Do you have a quick question?
You go first.
Mine's really quick. Did you say what year sophomores have to take it online?
2019.
All right, you said it, I didn't hear it, I apologize.
Yeah, 2019.
I apologize, I should know the answer. The school counselors that you're referencing here are those the same people that also are working with students relative to college search and seeing?
It's the same.
So they're not even fully available for this? I mean, for the?
No, and that's why we had added the school adjustment counselor. But again, with the, with the number of issues that we are, you know, that we're experiencing, you know, having somebody part-time again is very difficult. And we do work, you know, I think we two works great together, helping each other out, you know, when possible. But it is a significant, you know, we have one high school counselor writing all recommendations for seniors. It's one person. And that takes up a significant amount of time.
Question related to Laurie's. How counseling, but also just more specifically to the prep for, for the exam in the sophomore year? How much preparation do they get for that exam? And do they get us, should they not do well on it? Is there an opportunity at some other point in time for them to take it again if they want to, maybe in their junior year?
Well, not if they want to. They have to. They have a choice.
Okay, they have to, so.
So their, their entire, I mean, to be honest with you, their entire educational preparation in our school system.
Yeah.
Should, better prepare them.
Yeah, I just wonder, you know, they have prep courses for the SAT, they have PSAT. I just wonder if they had some special grants.
So we do offer through a grant, we do offer MCAS review courses.
Okay.
We target specific students to invite, but oftentimes, we open it up to everyone and they're held out for school. And the subjects of math we truly focus on. We did offer a little bit of biology as well. So we do offer those review courses. But, you know, our teachers do typically do, you know, an excellent job in preparing and those, you know, the math class of the sophomore year and the English class of the sophomore year, they take time to, you know, obviously go over and review. There's a lot of online resources that we make available to students to be able to take the practice, practice exams. The teachers will give them practice exams as well. If the student does not pass it, their first attempt, attempt, there are retake options for them, you know.
You just hear all kinds of Cassandra-like news stories about kids not graduating, you know, and then.
You know what I'm going to say.
There's no reason why the kid wouldn't be able to graduate by age, by grade 12.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
I just had a quick question. The adjustment counselor, that the social worker?
Yes.
What are the same, right?
Yes, yes.
I probably should know the answer to this. Didn't we ask to address this at all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you did.
I thought so, but I have a faulty memory.
That's okay.
That actually reminds me, that was another document I don't think you have in your list of documents that you were going to read, just in the ass report.
Yes.
Stumble across it anyway.
Thank you. Do you all send that in?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any further questions? All right. So now we can go into the business items for the regional district. I need a motion to appoint the superintendent as representative to ask the collective board directors.
So moved.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to appoint Christie Turgeon as member of the central office to be copied on the floor.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the annual report to the town.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
Right, see you.
Oh, thank you. Paul was in favor?
Aye.
And Laurie already gave her regionalization subcommittee update.
I just want to let Ed know that we went ahead and did the Berlin business items before you arrived.
We thought it was better to say your twinkle thumbs. Since we have the corals. Thank you for understanding. So are there any school committee comments or future agenda ideas? I have two. The first one is, I would like to express my, my pleasure at sitting next to our new superintendent. It's good to see you here.
Thank you, it's good to be here.
I certainly saw a lot of you this fall.
Say that nicely.
Well, familiarity, I guess, but it's a pleasure to see you at the table and to read your report and to know that you are here to work with a very talented group of people. And I'm looking forward to that relationship growing and developing.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here.
So, thank you. And the second thing is, I have to go on record as saying that although Christie is our, going to be our new assistant to the superintendent, I need to say that the committee, and I'll do this personally, I'm going to speak for the committee, I really appreciate what Cheryl Nelson has brought to that role over her 17 or 18 years, I've lost track. When I've worked with Cheryl, I found her to be friendly, knowledgeable, and willing to have a sense of humor, especially when I was clueless about what I was supposed to be doing as the chairperson of the school committee. She was gracious and informative and helping every step of the way. And I suspect that she does that with everyone. I don't think that was just because I'm particularly charming or I'm tall or whatever. I think she probably does that with people. And I was always impressed, I've always been impressed, by her depth of knowledge. And if she doesn't know the answer, which is a rare occasion, she has said to me, I will find out. And she would call some attorney or MASC or MASIS or, I don't know who she talked to, and she would have the answer. And so I like to go on record as saying what everyone is probably thinking. We're going to miss her. She's been a great friend to all of us and the district will be a little less rich because of her departure. But she deserves to move on to whatever the next phase is in her life. So I just wanted to say that from my own personal perspective.
I wonder if we shouldn't formally do something, a letter from the school committee to Cheryl, just thanking her for, because I echo everything you said. Had all the same experiences.
If that's the will of the committee, I would like to write it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
I believe the new official last day is this Friday.
The new official last day is this Friday. Okay, I will, I'll let her, I'll leave you all here. Okay, I will try to let her, I have a new job here. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything else? Okay. I'm going to go into executive session, we're not going to come back until the session. Okay. So we need to go into executive session.
To discuss strategy?
To discuss strategy, thank you. Why don't you tell me what I'm supposed to say, because I can't find it. Oh, I found it, okay. Each school committee is going to have to do that, so we're only going to go first.
Sure.
It's down to one, which is...
Oh, 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 okay.
I think we're all doing that.
Oh, okay, all right. To discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to the review of approved executive session minutes per chapter 30A subsection 22G2. Four minutes.
Okay. Anyone do the call?
Yes, give a little call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Boylston schools, they can't go into executive session because you don't have a form. So for the district, do I have, I need to, we don't need to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and to review approved executive session minutes per chapter 38 subsection 22G2. I'll need a roll call vote, Ed, Paul, Lori.
I just real...
We know.
Aye. Officially, aye.
Aye.
I undo my aye.
All right, we're all going to executive session. Now, two of the committees are going into executive session. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.